Northwest Regional Plan. Northwest Regional Planning Commission and I'd like to start with just adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda that was sent out? Okay, hearing none. We'll move then to welcome introductions. I know we have a couple of guests here. We'll start with the introduction of the folks that are here in the participant list. I'll start with my list as I see it here and then if you would just say your name and where you're from, please. So I'll start with Lynn Douglas.
Lynn Douglas Fletcher.
Rowena Brown.
Rowena Brown, Richford.
Alan Cunningham. Sorry, he's actually with Northwest Access, that's why. I'm sorry. Andy Ailing.
Andy Ailing, North Hero.
Sorry for mispronouncing your name, Andy. Barclay?
Barclay Morris here in Grand Isle.
Great, thanks. Sylvia Johnson?
Hi Sylvia Johnson from Isle of Wight.
Great. Bob Bearman?
Bob Bearman, glad to be here from South Hero.
Indeed, thanks Bob. Brian Doobie?
Brian Doobie, Fairfield.
Peter Zamore?
Peter Zamore, South Hero.
Thank you, Peter. Kirk Waite?
Waite from Georgia.
Lori Rupel?
Lori Rupel, Fletcher.
Vincent Hickey?
Vincent Hickey, Berkshire.
Thank you. Did I say Sylvia Jensen yet?
Yes.
You're worth double.
Yes, you did.
Sorry, it's bouncing around here as people join. Elizabeth Nance?
Elizabeth Nance, Swanton Village.
Great. Yvonne?
Yvonne Dandaran, Franklin.
And the other Andy?
Andy Julo, Lake Champlain Island Economic Development Corporation.
Great, thanks Andy. We have Linda Blash.
Hey everyone, Linda Blash staff from Northwest RPC.
Great, welcome. And starting to get down to the last numbers. I'll start with this name, which was a surprise to me as a fellow resident of Bakersfield, Linda McCall.
Linda McCall from Bakersfield.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, a new commissioner. She came to our planning meeting in town, had great ideas and suggested she might try the Northwest Regional Planning Commission if she was interested and here we go. All right, and Kirk, did I get you?
Yes, you did.
Sarah?
Sarah Had, Fairfax.
Very good. And then I have another guest, Tim Smith.
Tim Smith, Director of Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation.
Great. Then I have a telephone number eight zero two three zero nine eight four five one. Who's that, please?
Bill, let's Brian Doobie again. I'm gonna log off the computer and go on the phone.
Gotcha. Thanks, Brian. And then Bethany Remmers?
Hi everyone, Bethany Remmers on staff.
And Catherine Dimitriak.
Hi, Catherine Dimitriak, the director. And I think Al joined after you went through your list, okay.
Very good. So Al Vojel?
Al Vojel, St. Albans Town.
Great. Did I miss anyone else? All right, great. Thank you all for that. Our, this is our opportunity for public comment. Are there any comments from the public for us this evening? All right, hearing none. We'll move into the fourth item of the agenda, which is a review and action on the minutes of the April twenty twenty second, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Is there a motion?
I would, but I'm gonna have to abstain anyway, so.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I think that was, I think it was a motion by Kirk and a second by Bob on the minutes. And is there any discussion, changes, revisions for the minutes as presented from April twenty-seventh?
I was not at the meeting, so I had nothing substantive. I just had sent, as I, I do, a couple of typographical things to Catherine, so nothing that changes the minutes at all.
Okay, thanks Elizabeth. Any other questions, comments, or revisions? All right, hearing none. We'll have a vote on the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes as revised by the letter from Elizabeth to Catherine, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the minutes as presented and amended? Say nay. And anyone that would like to abstain, please say so.
I'm gonna abstain.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Barclay, Elizabeth. And Linda, I saw your hand go up. If one else that I missed there for abstentions? At three? All right, thank you all. All right, we move then to our guests tonight. We have a couple for the economic development priority projects. They are Tim Smith, who is from the Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation, and Andy Julo from Lake Champlain Islands Economic Development Corporation. And we have some projects that are in the lists in the package that was sent out. These are described in some detail there. One has a header saying Lake Champlain Islands, Alberg, Grand Isle, North Hero, South Hero. And then the other has a title at the top, Franklin County Projects. And I don't know if Tim and Andy would like to talk to these, or if someone from staff would like to talk to them.
Bill, I'll just start off by saying that this is a similar review to what you did prior. It must have been maybe a year and a half ago now, where you reviewed some past project lists. Because of the timing with this one, like some of our other projects, the Tim and Andy worked closely with our staff to go through the scoring and the prioritization of these projects, so because of timing, they did already get submitted to the state, so the action before the board is a request for ratification. And then we're hoping for future years that the schedule will work out, align better with your board meetings. And that was the introduction I wanted to give, to just give a status of where we are at in the process before turning it over to Tim and Andy.
Great. And then Tim, Andy, perhaps you could describe a little bit that went behind your prioritization from Grand Isle and Franklin County.
Sure. Thank you, Bill. I can jump in first. Thank you all for having us. This was a requirement of the regional development corporations from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And it's a process that was implemented, I think it was twenty twenty, I think this is the second year we've done it. And it's basically for us as regional development corporations, part of our contract commitments to the Agency of Commerce as part of our agreement with them in terms of getting funding as part of our, as part of our economic development activity. So last year, it was a little more short notice. This year, we had a little more time to implement it and do some outreach. We still need to refine the process a little bit more and get started a little bit sooner, for sure. But basically what we did in collaboration with the Regional Planning Commission was, we talked about how we might do some outreach and that one thing we did do this year was, we had a short one-page form that we sent to all the towns, asking them about what projects they had or were aware of. I think for the most part between Catherine and her staff and myself and our staff, we have a pretty good grasp on those larger projects. Now, keep in mind, the projects are focused on economic development. And I know that can be far-reaching. Housing can be economic development, transportation, childcare, all that, but we were focused on those projects with the criteria probably first and foremost are those that create jobs. And you know, the, the housing creates jobs in an indirect way, but over a long term, we're looking at those projects that either retained or created jobs moving forward. So we created a list and it was, I say we being Elizabeth, Nancy, and myself. And we, I think we had about twenty-five submittals, if you will, or additions to the list. And we focused on that and then we had a spreadsheet, which we both ranked. Elizabeth and I both ranked on a scale of one to five these categories, which include project purpose and benefits, project timeline and milestones and, and status. Project principal experience, what, what was the experience of the sponsor of the project? What was the support and regional need? What's the project cost and committed funding? And then lastly, what, what was the job creation? So Elizabeth did her list, I did mine. We sat down, traded back and forth, sort of explained why we thought one might have been higher than the other, and came up with a consensus between the two. We then reached out to regional planning, shared with them the same exact information that we had, I say then, what, it may have been at the same time, but so Greta from regional planning and Kathy Valloy looked at the list and, and the ranking and the scale and they did their own. And then we mainly met with Kathy to sort of evaluate where we all were and how, how the projects were laid out and we, you know, they were shuffled according to the case that was made by someone, so the final, the final list is what you had through that collaboration between regional planning and, and FCIDC. I would say we, we submitted a list of ten to the state and we submit the list to, to the state. We thought it was more, when we first started, we thought it was more just to educate the state, Agency of Commerce as to what was going on in each county. We thought it was something that would be utilized by the governor as he traveled the state and was, became more aware of the activities. And then it sort of took a little bit of a leap from that to become more of a prioritized list for grants that were submitted, so mainly Northern Borders Regional Commission grants. And then recently with ARPA dollars, the capital investment program. So those were two that were utilized for for evaluating their applications and how they, where they fell on the priority list. So that's, that was sort of the process. As I said, we reached out to every community. We didn't get many responses back. We got some, but we placed them on the list as well. And, and the list you had before you is what we, what the consensus was between regional planning and FCIDC. So then I'm always speaking for the Franklin County process. Andy had a little bit different process, but he was still under the same guidelines of getting a list to the Agency of Commerce, prioritizing, etc. So Andy, I don't know if you wanna add anything to what I shared.
Sure. I mean, our outreach was fairly similar, went around all the select boards. ComDRB hearings, looked in the local paper, just tried to get a feel for, for what was going out there. Kind of, kind of similar to Tim. Was kind of hard to explain to people exactly what the benefit was of, of being on this list, but I think as we've seen the, the grant rounds come out over the last few months, there's been some, some data to show, you know, how many of those that were selected were, were on this, this list, so you know, we're just starting to really get some, some good selling points when we, we approach businesses about taking the time to fill out this list. There are multiple lists in the state, so a lot of people are, you know, wondering why should I fill out, you know, a form to get on one more, one more list. You know, we have a, just a slightly different ranking process. I do get my board involved. We have a committee of my board members that, that do the same thing. It's, the criteria is universal for, for all of the regional development corporations. It really rewards those who are, have expertise on board, are ready, and can demonstrate that they're, they're shovel-ready, I guess, is, is the buzzword, and then also that they are, can generate a lot of jobs. That, that, that weighs very heavily in the ranking. You know, just kind of looking at ours, it's, it's kind of booze, burgers, and babies is kind of how it all, all shakes out. You know, the restaurants, the alcohol establishments do very well, childcare facilities do pretty well. Historical preservation tends to, to be suppressed a little bit in this list, just because it's, it's, it's not a job creator.
I, I'd just like to add, Bill, if I could. So this list was presented to, to the FCIDC board, I think, back in March, don't hold me to that, but so we presented this, we had a discussion at a meeting and my board approved this as presented as well.
No, sorry.
No, go ahead, Andy.
No, I just note as well that we, you know, this, this was in December. You know, the ARPA funds are still out there and, and towns are still kind of considering what they're gonna do. The, the grant rounds had been appropriated, but hadn't quite, you know, come fully into action, so there, there was kind of an odd cutoff to, to turn this in, where there's a lot more projects that are, are in the hopper and there's probably more than I'm aware of that weren't quite ready to mature enough to be on this list than, than actually made it. So I'm hopeful next year we'll have a bigger selection to rank from.
Yeah, well, thank you both. I can see how it could be a complicated landscape for towns right now with the ARPA funds, with the kind of ongoing activities that we've had for years for projects. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and then I'll go to the rest of the commissioners. For the Franklin County list, you have projects that are called observation or to be monitored. What does that mean, Tim?
Where are you seeing that, Bill?
Yeah, so this is the fourth page of the Franklin County list. There's the twelve that are listed in priority.
Okay, yep.
And then there's those that follow without numbers that are to be monitored.
Yeah, so almost all of those on that list were ones that are in the discussion phase. I know regional planning has had a lot of conversations relative like the Georgia South Village. You've got the Highgate Core there. There's been some activities. We know the Richford Post Office needs some improvements and that the village has some concerns about the future of that. We knew at the time Cadillac Motel was potentially gonna be purchased by Champlain Housing for homeless, but at the, at the time we put the list together, there really wasn't a lot of concrete direction. You know, we didn't know that Champlain Housing was gonna come up with the funding for the Cadillac Motel, or we didn't know what the timeframe was for the Georgia South Village, so we're, we, we have those on the list. We continue to monitor them, monitor them, and you know, we expect that some of these will move up as they get a commitment of funding or, or more interest in, in trying to bring those to fruition. So that's what it is. They were on the list, but they just didn't have enough standing, if you will, to, to really get a high score. So we will continue to follow these, but this, thank you for pointing that out. These, these give you a, a good observation of what is and could and maybe will be happening around the county here in the next few years.
Great. And then for both of you, there are projects that are presented in priority. What are your general findings relative to how far down a list we might find ourselves at the end of a year? Is it a quarter of the list, half of the list? Is this maybe a list that, for example, in Franklin County, there's twelve, it might actually be that something happens in most of those twelve?
Yeah, I'm just flipping through that. You know, I, I, I'm just gonna take a quick, I, I think you'd probably see five to six in the next year having some true activity. We know the Fonda site is going, is under construction now. We have potential construction happening for the town industrial park. The state airport maybe a little longer just because of the funding cycles and, and getting the applications. Pearly Block, we could actually be closing on that here next month. La Moya Valley Rail Trail is moving forward. And that's, I think that's coming to fruition here soon. Montgomery is getting their funding, so I think, you know, I, I think it's a fair, fair bet to say we think five could, could potentially be moving. I don't know if they'd be taken off the list, but there's definitely some activity. And I bet you one or two could definitely be off the list by this time next year.
We had, yeah, we had two come off from last year's and just kind of looking at this year's list, I, I'd say another two to three out of the ten is, is a possibility to be gone by, by next cycle.
Great, thanks. Kirk, I see you have your hand up. Do you have a question, comment?
Yeah, Andy, the, the list we have is an un-prioritized list. Did you end up submitting a prioritized list?
Uh, yeah, there's a spreadsheet that has them ranked scored, ranked and scored, yeah.
All right, I, I guess I was just looking at the descriptions.
Okay, yeah. Do you want me to read through the ones that are, the ranking of them?
I think I can, if it's here, I'm sure I can find it.
Okay.
It did not, that spreadsheet did not end up in the packet. It was just on my town list.
So I, so I don't know, I don't know if we're looking to, you know, give board approval of the prioritized list or not, but what we see here doesn't have any priority, priority around it.
Do, do you have that Catherine, or do you need me to send it?
I have the spreadsheet, but it wasn't easy for me to use it to come up with a prioritized list of projects. Because it wasn't like in any order, so if you have just a list or you can just read what the priorities are, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, you want me to send it or you want me to read it?
May, maybe you can just show it on your screen and walk us through it quickly.
Sure.
Cause I think you, you want ratification of the prioritized list, right?
Yes, yep. And so this is the spreadsheet. Let me expand that a little bit. And so each one of the projects here in a column, and then these are the scores. And then down below with the total and the priority, and they are shuffled a little bit because they're sorted by town.
I'm not, I'm not.
It's not, it's not.
Okay, gotta click share. How about now?
There you go.
All right. So each one of the columns is a project and they're scored down here and the total is down here at the bottom, and then the, the priority is, is given in the last, last row. So the top was the Two Hero Public House, which is a brew pub facility that's, that's coming to South Hero. It's gonna have a, a, a pretty high number of employees. They're planning on providing quite a few benefits. They've got some, some heavy hitters involved in, in development, so they know what they're doing. So that was the number one. And then there was a tie for number two between a Turn to Joy daycare facility in, in South Hero. And another, another bar and grill, Bravo Zula Lakeside Bar in, in North Hero. And then the next was the Grand Isle Lake House, which is in need of some repairs to expand their accommodations and actually get back on their feet after being closed for a couple of years during COVID. After that was the Alberg Childcare Center, which was very high in the ranking last year, but they had a site picked out. They were ready to go, and then they lost that site. And so that set them back. In December, they didn't yet have another site picked out. They're pretty close to having that out now, so they'll probably move back up. And then after that was Keeler Bay Marina, which is doing, in the process of turning that into, from a campground that had, also had a marina to a strictly marina operation. And then we had the South Hero Meeting House, which is the, the beautiful white building in the village of South Hero that is in need of some foundational repair. And let's see, number eight was courthouse parking lot, some downtown village, or some village parking in the, the village of North Hero to support the, well, the downtown area or the village area, but also the courthouse, which has been semi-closed for the last couple of years, so that got put on hold and moved down, but is now, now opening back up. And then finally, we have a, a slaughterhouse being proposed in, in the town of Albert.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for pointing that out, Kirk.
No problem.
All right.
I also have a question for Tim, while I've got my hands up, I guess. Tim, so the focus was on job creation. Were there any that help with filling jobs as well? Because right now, filling those open jobs is almost as big a problem as creating them. Yeah, thanks for that, Kirk. I don't know. I'm just double checking here. I know last year we had the Workforce Investment Board. I'm, I'm quite sure we had it on the list last year. And once again, we, we had that discussion, but we really have nothing in place at this point that in the state with their ARPA monies, did have some money set aside. It's going to the Department of Labor for the purpose of doing workforce development in this region. That came out during the legislative, legislative session prior to us completing the list. Or came out after we completed the list. So yeah, we, we agree with you, but we just had nothing in place. You know, it sort of falls under that monitoring piece that we understand the, the need for that job, for the job creation and career education and all that, but we just had no infrastructure, if you will, or foundation to present anything, and that's why it's not on the list. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, this is Bill. I, I would say that childcare would be one that would be supportive of people getting back to work and it's good to see that that is a higher number of them in Grand Isle. Are, are we seeing any interest in trying to support that, or does childcare seem to be less acute a need in Franklin County?
Well, we are, once again, another project popped up after the list and that's in Ennisburg. A lady is losing her accommodations and looking to construct a facility in the Ennisburg Industrial Park. And, and we were, we too, we being FCIDC, were looking at constructing a childcare facility in Ennisburg. The issue there was what we thought were gonna be available for grants for us to do that proved not to be the case because we're a 501(c) for, I guess we are. And the grants, the grants were eligible for, you had to be a 501(c)(3). So we've tabled that for now, but we still are having the discussion.
And I'll, I'll, Tim, you probably missed it because you've not a hundred percent with us, but the, the with coordinator is number ten in the project priority list.
What was it?
Yes, so it's on the next, the top of the next page.
Oh, yes, right.
Yep, so it is on there. That's what Workforce Investment Board Coordinator. And then we at Regional Planning Commission have also been working, we work out with Albert Childcare Center, but also on a project in St. Albans City for Almond Blossoms Childcare, which is getting We work out with Albert Childcare Center, but also on a project in San Aubin City for Almond Blossoms Childcare, which is getting ready. To be opening, so it's really great. And thank you Bethany for pointing out, it was number ten on the list.
Yeah, thank you, Bethany. Uh, so Kirk, just to reinforce that, I mean, we, 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 it made the ten, number ten on the list. Because I'm, I'm backtracking here a little bit, but uh, we, we realize the value of it. But still, it's ten because we don't have any real infrastructure in place at this time.
All right, I just uh, hoping that we're all keeping our eye on that need.
Oh, no, no doubt. Just, just to give people an indication, um. Um, we, we as FCIDC redid our strategic plan for the organization and presented it a couple of weeks ago. And um, workforce about, and, and we were at Highgate Community Meeting last night for uh, Council on Rural Development. And workforce development is key, it was key in our strategic plan moving forward. And it's key for uh, the community visit that these are deep. There, there was one, the number one topic, trying to um. Trying to do more career education, more uh, trades training, more, more of everything, so. Yeah, I know, that's, it's just um, just trying to find that structure that's gonna work like we did when Kathy La Boy did it for five years. Or more.
I'm gonna go to Al and then uh, Barclay after.
My question, I guess, is to Catherine as well as Tim. Tim, I mean Catherine, Tim just said that he didn't have a five oh one C three. Why couldn't we use the uh, RPC's five oh one C three corporation?
Can I jump in on that?
Pardon?
Can I jump in on that?
Sure.
Um, part of it was timing because it just said nonprofit. So we applied and then very, very late in the process, after the application had been submitted. We were told we were not eligible and the, the deadline had already gone past.
Got you, got you.
It, it actually happened twice, Al. We, it said nonprofit, so we, we ran with it. And even caught the uh, funding sources off guard. They said, oh no, you are not eligible. But that was long after we submitted the application.
So I guess it's not under my business, but wouldn't it be worthwhile to follow the RPC and create a subsidiary nonprofit, five oh one C three?
Or just use us, we can.
Or just using RPC, right, right.
No, you're, you're right, Al, you're right.
Yeah, I was actually gonna point that out. If you, either of you or any of your partner associations find that a five oh one three C is required. We can do that through our Northwest Regional Foundation.
Right.
Thank you, Al.
And then Barclay, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to mention that workforce is an equally difficult proposition in Grand Isle. I had a short chat with the business owner in South Hero last night, and apparently they did a small local. Job fair at the library, South Hero, and four businesses showed up. And that's all that showed up. So um, especially leading into this peak season in Grand Isle, um, it's gonna be very difficult for. Businesses that, that really rely heavily on, on the summer season to, to make their living.
All right, well, we appreciate uh, both of your organizations' work for these purposes. We appreciate the effort that went into this particular prioritization. Are there any other questions or comments before we look at uh, vote to ratify these two? Prioritization schemes for Grand Isle and Franklin County?
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
Yes, my thoughts are that first of all, we need more housing, and then we need concurrently to advertise and to market ourselves. To the, the national community and international communities to relocate to Franklin and Grand Isle Counties. I think we need to create a um, a major effort, whether it's another corporation or through RPC and FDIC. But we've got to have a campaign for housing and then a place to put these, to invite these people to live in. We're desperately short of younger people to fill the jobs that we've got.
Yeah, I, I think on the, on the plus side is, you know, the Working Communities Challenge. We have the, the program manager. Um, he's hit the ground running, um, done some events, I believe, one in Fairfax, you know, trying to help get the word out. The um, request for proposals has gone out for housing needs uh, uh, analysis. Um, so you, you know, I, I think the struggle is gonna be, we have a short-term need. Um, so we have to balance meeting the current needs versus the long term. So.
One of the items that came off the list last year was the, the Sider Senior Housing Project, which, which took all, took decades to get together. But it's really the first uh, dense housing uh, in the islands in septic capacity was, was the challenge there. But I mean, hopefully now that we've got one and that those challenges were overcome, we can find a way to get more dense housing in the islands.
Great.
Yeah, I do like that idea, Al, of uh, a campaign to. Invite people to live Franklin Grand Isle, they're two beautiful places among the whole state. All right, any other questions or comments before we vote to ratify? All right, um, can I have a motion relative to ratification of these two project priority lists?
I'd, I'd make the motion that we ratify the priority projects as presented from Franklin County Industrial Development Corp. And Lake Champlain Islands Economic Development Corp.
Thank you, Kirk.
Second.
Second by Al. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to accept these two priority lists, please say aye, aye? Any opposed, say nay? And are there any abstentions?
I need to abstain, Elizabeth.
Of course, thank you, Elizabeth. All right, so the motion carries, and again, thank you gentlemen and your staff and all who participated in putting this together. It's a really exciting, not just for this coming year, but for the future altogether. And we hope that we can work together on some other projects as well to build further.
Um, Bill, just one thing, you mentioned the gentleman and their staff, and thank you, cause I'm staff, but Catherine and her staff as well.
Great.
And I think Andy is his staff.
For now, yes. This is, this is a staff meeting right here.
Thank you, Bill, the year and your board, appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move then to our next item of business, which is our commission report. And we'll start with finance and operations. I don't see Harold has joined us.
Harold, Harold has a family conflict, so um, senses regrets, but I can try to answer any questions if there are some. I will note, we are working on the FY twenty three budget. On his track of which fiscal year, a twenty-three budget and the finance committee will be meeting next month to, to do their review of that draft budget.
Yeah, it's a busy time of year and we're starting to move toward. Having some time off in the summer, so. Oh my, two dogs in the room. Two girls. Um, the quiet one is the alpha too. Um, so um, apologize for that and. We'll um, look again if there are any questions or comments on the financial reports. There's on page twenty, the profit and loss budget versus actual. And then on page twenty-one, the balance sheet. Okay, uh, my dog may have had some concerns, but I'm personally, things look reasonable there. From my perspective, we're more than halfway through the year. We're looking at fractions that are close to that number for most of the profit and loss budget versus actual. Um, as usual, some are a little above, others a little bit low. And that fluctuates as the money comes and goes, the work gets done. Don't see anything unusual personally relative to the balance sheet from my review. There are no questions, comments, I'll take a motion relative to our. Now, do we need to vote on now, sorry? We do that in other groups I lead. All right, we'll move then to personnel and Lori.
Uh, we've not met in the last few months, but we will be meeting in July to start the staff review, salary, all that bonus, all that. Stuff that we have to get done this summer.
Yes, very important stuff that uh. We, we all appreciate, um, but it comes so quickly every year. It's amazing how fast it comes. Um, and that is a part of my report for the executive committee is that we do have a number of. Let's call them end of the year activities that are arriving rapidly. Um, and we have our usual uh, cessation of. Uh, or uh, cancellation, postponement of a meeting in August because of vacations. Uh, we had talked about a number of different things that we want to make sure get done this year. In combination with a um, broader cessation of activities. For the commission, specifically that we would look toward having. Either no or only those committee meetings that are absolutely essential in the month of August. Some of you may have had interactions with the NRPC staff. Um, and uh, a number of us are uh, aware of the real challenges. That are ongoing, not only there with a number of staff becoming ill. Somewhat simultaneously, which often happens, um, but also uh, in our community. And then the somewhat difficult effort it takes all of us. In this stage of recovery, we're moving away from this being an active emergency. To something that we're still trying to figure out what it looks like as a. Incorporation of this particular infectious disease into our more everyday lives. And the thought came up that what might be useful is if the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. Had a solid month of August to, one, if people wanted to take some time off that they felt they could. Because they didn't need to worry about their work on committees. Um, that they might even shuffle their calendar so that they could maybe have some extra time of focus there. In that month to work in their office about uh, on, on some of those projects that maybe are um. Piling up a little bit. I can tell you in my job. We didn't do any of the real work for almost two and a half years, and it's come back like an avalanche behind us. That is um, somewhat stressful, and I can imagine it's the same for many of you. Um, but that will uh, likely mean that we'll have uh, some, some, some changes. But I hope that it's something that everyone will, will be able to take advantage of and plan for some extra time off in August. Um, and uh, I think it also makes it so that when we think about. The budget, the personnel committee activities, the elections for officers of the NRPC. Will be doing that in a little bit uh, condensed fashion relative to the amount of time that we might provide to that. So uh, I, I don't think it's gonna be harmful at all. I think it should be quite helpful to us. But I just wanted to share that was one of the more important things that we discussed at the executive committee uh, in the last couple of weeks. The uh, others that are on the executive committee, are there other topics that we should share? Catherine, anything you can remember beyond, or anything that you might add relative to that August?
I think you summed it up nicely, and the other thing that we discuss is on the agenda later.
Right, yeah, and, and that is of course our um. Comments on equity and inclusion, which is agenda item number eight. All right, um, we'll move then, if there's no further questions or comments on executive committee to project review. And Bob Beerman.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, project review, um, we completed our analysis of the mini storage. Expansion in Franklin Park West. Um, we've concluded that there is no substantial regional impact. But we also stated that it does not conform with regional plan. This is our annual dialogue about the sidewalks not being supplied through that region. Uh, this is the same way we responded to earlier projects in that area. The other thing is they had not gotten their updated storm water permit yet. So we made our approval conditional upon that being granted. The second one we talked about was a solar project in Sheldon. Um, I, uh, this was still a, uh, the, the, with the ninety day, the early, the early discussion. That's we haven't received the full uh, uh, application on that one yet. Um, but we did meet with the developer and they came to our meeting and we had a review. It's pretty standard to what we've kind of done before, so I, I didn't see anything real shattering with that one. The next one uh, was uh, an additional antenna on an existing tower, telecommunications tower. Um, it's nice, nice to see that they're, they're putting in the same space. The other development there, they are having to add an additional generator before we can tell from uh, there's really that generator, the noise level is far enough away. Uh, from any kind of neighbors, it does not appear to be that would be an issue from noise standpoint. So we concluded that there was no substantial regional impact with that, and it did conform with the regional plan. Um, any questions about those or additional comments from the committee that I missed?
Yeah, um, the solar farm in Sheldon. I believe you were at the climate and energy meeting when we listened to state discuss. That Northern Vermont has an excess production and a, and a. Not nearly enough transmission. Um, as you look at that project as it comes, is, is that something that you're gonna be? Using as a parameter to whether or not it's regional support?
We did, yeah, we did ask them about that, that Shia issue, and, and this particular location is not an issue. There, there's, their supply is to Green Mountain Power, um, and they're not in that uh, reduced. Uh, or the overloaded area. So we, we, we do ask about that, Barclay, as each one of these comes in. So we, we try to be ready for it when it comes through that way.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, that's a good point, Barclay, and glad you recall that. It, it is something that is important for us to, to be mindful of. And I think another thing the project review tries to do is to share with the broader board. Some of the things that are potentially going to affect other communities besides the one. In the project reviewed at the particular time, and Bob mentioned the generator. The reason there's a generator at this facility is that the system is a part of AT&amp;T FirstNet. Which is dedicated to responders and the dedication of that requires a generator. So it can be relied upon if there's some sort of power interruption. That site will be on so fire EMS and law enforcement can have their communications. So that may occur at some other FirstNet telecommunications sites in Grand Isle and Franklin County. Telecommunications sites in Grand Isle and Franklin County. So. If you're accustomed to seeing these or you you hear of one in your town, that is a nuance that. May um be worth. Looking into. This case, it was a place where the noise of a generator is unlikely to be a problem. In other places, it could be, but obviously when we have a power outage, we're all kind of used to the sound of generators. Um, I know it happens in my town and it's a constant buzz throughout. All right, any other comments or questions for project review? All right, we'll move then to the transportation. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Al.
Um, the Shia issue has been going on for at least half a decade, if not more. And I think the RPC now now needs to take a, if you will, a political stand or an advocacy stand. To get the big corporations off their duff and spend the millions of dollars they need to increase. The capacity of the distribution of the transmission system. We can't just sit there back and say we can't put up any more solar panels when we know. The country, New England, needs that electricity, and if we have the capacity, there's no excuse from my point of view. That the transmissions are not being upgraded now.
I'll I'll just add that there, we did have a presentation at the Climate and Energy Committee on the Comprehensive Energy Plan, including the. The Shia bottleneck and I. It is now posted up on our YouTube channel. We have a YouTube channel where we're posting our videos for our meetings and. It's, I've had long conversations about this topic with the Department of Public Service staff and it's. Extraordinarily complicated.
I know, I know.
In terms of who pays and what which ratepayers get the bill. And so. Um, I'm not even sure if I could define exactly what our advocacy should be in a way that would actually be helpful and not harmful. Uh, but it's something I think we need to continue to educate ourselves about and figure out. Where the places are that we can make a difference. For example, we made the suggestion in the Comprehensive Energy Plan. That the state should prioritize. Projects that for like electric vehicle incentives and heat pump incentives in places where there are bottlenecks. So that you can increase the demand on electricity and where we can make a difference in places like that, we should be doing it. So. It's very complicated, but it's.
No, and and it is very complicated and, you know, I I I've argued on the so the the side of. They should upgrade, but I also can argue on the side of, well, why not put the the generation where the. Capacity exists and exists in in great magnitude.
And I would just add that this is a year where we're revising our regional plan and this would be without. Other kind of political advocacy, a good place for us to make clear statements about. Objectives like those that you described now and that you described Kirk. That we can not only have for the region, but also as we've seen with numerous. Objectives of our regional plan filter down to the municipalities in their plans. And hopefully we could, we could advocate for that. Uh, it would be wonderful if the. The renewable power projects in the Northeast Kingdom had. Power services, and I think they were built with the thoughts that there would be some. And we've just recently heard about the judgments on those who had promised those things and not delivered. So it's a lot of odd things have happened there, but it would be nice if they could be remedied through some good. Uh, planning, uh, political action and maybe some good funding sources. Thank you all for that.
Great, we kind of a little off topic, but um in summary for the project review, no board action is necessary.
You're good. Yes, we did go astray there, although it uh somewhat will move into. One of our other topics here shortly on energy and climate. Uh, before that, though, uh, we have Transportation Advisory Committee. And I don't know if there's anyone here who can speak for it besides Harold, but Bethany, you usually can.
Yes, I would just say that um item number seven, um, the bridge prioritization is what the the TAC focused on this month.
Great, so that will be our next action item. And then we do have energy and climate committee. Uh, I was unable to make that as I was uh conflicted with multiple meetings simultaneously. I can do two, but I can't do three at the same time. I'm not doing all any but one right now, just so you know. Um, anyone from that meeting last Wednesday, I believe it was?
I kind of just gave a summary of it, though we did have the presentation of the Comprehensive Energy Plan. And we had other things on the agenda, but the committee had so many great questions and conversation that it ended up taking up the whole agenda. And uh, we did post the video, so it is available to anybody who wants to see it. And there's lots of people here who were at the meeting too, Barclay and Peter and others.
Anything that you folks would add from your meeting last week?
I would just say that it's um very complex uh topic in that we've got some very good people. At the Department of Public Service and elsewhere who are focused on it.
Go ahead, Barclay. I think you're you're muted. I think your hand gestures represent sound.
Yeah, I I forgot I muted. Um, this isn't from the meeting last week, but if memory serves me. I think it was about three or four years ago that the regional had um. Somebody from public service come and talk about. This this issue and I could swear he said that. The projected cost of half a billion dollars for the upgrades in the transmission was. Really going to be unnecessary if the state energy plan comes to fruition. Cause the region will be using the excess energy within about twenty years. And so then we're going to have this huge investment in transmission capability that we may actually not need anymore. So that also complicates the whole issue.
And we're very glad to have some really. Good minds on our energy and climate committee to uh keep an abreast of that, but I I think. The suggestion to think about having public service come in and speak to us again. Now would be or as soon as we can would be useful, especially with our regional plan revision in process.
The only other thing I'll add is that we are with the Swan Energy Committee co-hosting uh Electric Vehicle Fair. Uh, next Wednesday on the first of June in Swanton.
Great, yeah, if you can, go out to that. They're really fun to see and maybe you can get to drive one.
And pass it around to your friends and neighbors.
What time, Catherine?
I'm gonna look that up and tell you in a few minutes.
In the meantime.
I'll pl- I'll I'll plug on to that too, Bill. I got I got to drive the electric Jag when they had the one in Grand Isle, so.
Wow, I drove an electric Hyundai, so not quite a Jag. All right, so um we'll move then to Brownfield Committee, Elizabeth.
Uh, sorry, I was trying to beat Catherine to looking up the EV thing in in Swanton, so um. I don't believe, no, we haven't met. The Brownfield Committee has not met in a couple of months. They were supposed to meet. I I'm losing track of months. I can't believe it's June al- almost. I believe we were going to meet late April, early um. May, but we didn't need to. It was only uh on the Riviera Hotel, the um. The phase two assessment estimate, which was done a year or so ago, um needed to be revised, but. Um, they didn't end up meeting. I think the um, the agenda packet has updates on those ongoing projects. Um, the Young Landfill. The um. Site-specific quality assurance project plan addendum for six South River Street in Swanton. Um, has been submitted. It's waiting for review from uh EPA. Um, and Vermont D E C. So we are hoping finally before that building falls down to get some. Get the phase two started. Um, and then as you can read, the phase two assessment. And asbestos and lead abatement will be completed at the Innisberg Armory. That's what I know, because that's what I just read off of the agenda packet.
And I do appreciate your reminding us all that there are reports for most of the committees in the packet that was sent out.
Thank you.
Bill, I did look up the time. It's from three thirty to six o'clock at the Swanton Village Office on June first, and I put that in the chat.
Thank you, Catherine. Uh, we'll go now to the region, uh, Regional Plan and Policy Committee. Double dipping here, Elizabeth.
Yeah, that's me. Uh, we did meet in May and had a really good conversation. We've been taking sections of the current regional plan and doing some high level. Here's where we think we need to make it stronger. Here's some things that aren't in there. Um, maybe we can do some rearranging, so just some very high level. Um, general comments to kind of help direct staff or as we get that process going. Um, I was not at the executive committee, so I know that it says that you um reviewed the regional plan update and the schedules. Oh, the regional plan update, so I that may be agenda item eight. Um, so I will, I will skip to that, but um. We will be meeting in June and finalizing some outreach. We had some great ideas about doing some public outreach at events that are already happening. So we're not creating new ones. Um, and we may ask. For board members who um to reach out to their own communities to kind of help um staff. So I would reach out to Swanton, um, Bill, you would do Bakersfield and et cetera, um. As schedules allow, um, we understand that we're all busy, but we thought a kind of a direct. Um, outreach would be helpful and it would take some of the load off the staff.
So we'll have that uh agenda item number eight coming up here shortly on the update for the. Committees. Actually, that that's separate. That's that's not related specifically to the really regional plan. I don't think it's about our committees. Um, we'll move on to Vermont Economic Progress Council, Al.
There is no um agenda items from Franklin or Grand Isle Counties at at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, thanks, Al, for your continued representation of us there. Yeah.
Uh, there is probably no update, but you did skip municipal plan review.
Where is it? Um, I didn't, I don't see that.
Oh, it's on, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the list of. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the list of reports, that's why. I'll shut up now.
Okay, um, we'll see if Bob or Catherine has a report relative to the Green Mountain Transit.
So we uh spent some time reviewing the draft. Uh, state grant application that was submitted on behalf of Green Mountain Transit. It included. Expansions um in three areas. One was expanded service to Stowe. Another was um doing a micro transit pilot project in Berry, and I don't remember what the third one was. And I will add that I was the sole no vote on that because I'm concerned that we don't have a. Clear process for how we prioritize where the expansions were and. Understanding, for example, why Barry was chosen over St. Albans for the micro transit study, even though we were talking about St. Albans too. And why so expansion is chosen over the demonstrated need of making the Richmond commuter connect with the Burlington link. So you can actually take it both ways in the morning and the afternoon. Um, so I did vote no. It's the first time I think I've voted no. Um, but I was the sole no vote, so that did pass, and it was submitted to the state with those requests. And I did follow up with some communication with the general manager to just get a better understanding. Of how um Bob and I as board members can have more of an impact on those sorts of decisions. And hoping that we get some guidance in that regard.
Are there? Forces there that are. Really causing biases towards central Vermont versus. Our region?
I think there's two things at play. Um, you know, when it comes to something like, so you have Vale. Who is willing to pay and able to pay fifty percent of the match. You don't have commuters from Richmond. That need to go into Williston, able to pay fifty percent of the cost of the service. So, you know, it's a matter of where the money is. And then I think, um, you know, there's a lot. Broader municipal government support of transit in central Vermont primarily. Not because of a failing of our municipal governments, but because for a very long time, there was a dedicated staff person. Who worked on transit in central Vermont. So there was a presence there always at these local meetings, building the relationships with the local governments. And we haven't had that in Franklin Grand Isle really ever. So. Um, we don't, we we haven't, we don't have that foundation that was built, and so we we need to build that foundation somehow in an era of shrinking. Administrative staff at the transit agency. So a lot to figure out, but I'm not giving up.
Yeah, that's another.
Also, part of that, Bill, is is I think the state had all, it kind of giving the GMT staff. Heads up ahead of time saying they were already prioritizing Berry over the, over St. Albans. So. So we were given the answer before we had the chance to vote.
Yeah, you could vote with them or look silly, but Catherine, thank you for your advocacy in that vote for our region. And it is a really important element of workforce. Um, services, if you can't get there. Because of transportation needs, you're not going to be able to work in a job. Okay, uh, we'll go to. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Sorry, Bill. Um, Bob, is there any more progress towards more electric buses? Um, I I got stuck behind one of the diesel ones entering Burlington the other day. Is it accelerated up the hill towards UVM? It was a pretty disgusting black cloud coming out of the back of that.
Yeah, there there's, there's four more on order plus some smaller ones for the smaller commuter routes. So we're, we are going after more electric.
Great.
As we can, as we continue to sort through the problems for the two we have, yeah.
All right, we'll move on to Healthy Roots Advisory Committee, Lynn.
Uh, we did not meet. We will, we're trying to meet soon.
And as it gets warmer, there'll be more work to do. All right, um, the foundation, Northwest Regional, Vermont Regional Foundation, Kirk.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Um, we'll then go to staff and um, would you like to go first, Bethany?
Sure, I just have two quick updates. Um, the first is that we've um hired an intern. Um, from, who comes from Swanton and Franklin, and his name is Avery Feely, who will be. Uh, working on several um transportation and water quality projects and a lot of field work. Um, he's uh just finished his sophomore year at UVM as a natural resources major, I believe. Um, and Catherine, do we have a second intern coming on board or is that still pending? So and and the possibility for a second intern, they'll be working with Greta and other planning staff primarily on land use. Planning.
The offer is out. I haven't heard whether it's been accepted.
Okay. So that's exciting for the summer. It's always great. We've always had such great success and and really awesome interns and they, they always impress me. Um, and the skills that they come in with. And then the other just update for you is that I think last week, the uh Vermont Better Road Grant. Awards came out, um, and we had nine applications that came from our region, six of whom of them were funded. Um, so we've had good success um in getting water quality transportation projects funded through that program. The three that weren't funded were the category D applications, which tend to be larger culverts. Um, and that's a very competitive category, and I hope in year, in future years, V Trans will be able to allocate more money. Um, for those, for that larger category for culverts. That's all I have.
Call your muted.
No, I'm just practicing my mime.
Perfect.
That is so good. So Catherine, would you like to introduce Linda? And I'm not sure if there's an update there too?
Yeah, but go ahead, Linda. Linda's been with us for a while. She just has been to a board meeting for a while.
Yes. Let's see, I have a couple of projects in the region that I am managing for municipalities, one in Franklin and one in Montgomery. They're transportation projects, and so I've been working with the towns to get through all the federal requirements on those projects and the Montgomery one is almost ready for construction and the Franklin one, we are in the right of way process. So those are moving along. And then one of the other projects that I've been working on for a while that is soon to come to fruition is construction of some road erosion road projects on private roads in the Lake Carmi watershed, which is a grant that was funded through the Lake Champlain Basin Program, and we did inventories of all the roads and prioritize the projects, and we've been working with the landowners to coordinate permission and refine the designs. And there've been a lot of challenges with that project, so I'm very excited to say that I think we're going to construct one soon.
Great. Well, thanks, Linda, and hopefully Lake Carmi will benefit from that work. Catherine, do you have anything to add from staff reports?
I think most everything I have has already been said under the committee reports. The only thing I wanted to add is we were pretty excited to see the final disposition of H seven oh three, which was the Workforce Investment Bill. And that was passed by the legislature this year, and I think it's been signed by the governor, or it will be signed by the governor. And there are three pieces of that bill that I just wanted to highlight that I personally and professionally am super excited about. And I think will be of interest to all of you. The first is that there is a new job training program that's going to be established that will provide scholarships for people to go into the licensed trades. And that will help cover the fees and required training courses, and those will be given as grants that will not have to be repaid if the person stays and works in Vermont for a number of years. I think it's two or three years. So that is really exciting, giving some, some incentive for people who want to go into the trades. The second is something I think we mentioned at a board meeting a while ago, which there was a stat, there is established now a pilot program that will allow high school students who are juniors or who have completed their junior year to take adult continuing technical education courses and pay for the cost of those courses. Right now, if you're a high school student, you can take a free college class, but if you want to take a credentialing tech ed class, you have to pay for it yourself if you're not in the tech program. So this is bringing some parity to those tech skills and those certified jobs. Those job certifications for our high school students. So that's really exciting, and myself, Kathy Lavoie and our staff and several folks from the Northwest and Cold Hollow Tech Center testified on that, and so we're really happy to see that stay in. And then finally, there's a new the new tech education construction program, multiple millions of dollars. I think it's in the fifteen to twenty million dollars set aside for this program that provides the ability for our construction trade programs at the tech schools to build housing. So it does two things. It provide, it enables them to purchase land and build the housings that can be sold, or also allows them to build facilities to house construction training programs. So right now, as our construction program manager at St. Albans would talk about, if they go to a site, they spend half of their time with the setup and the takedown, and they don't actually get to do the work. And if they had a place where they could work, they could prefab a lot of the stuff and actually spend all of their time doing the work and less time on mobilization. So those are three things I just want to tell you about that. Oh, no more as they roll out, but they're very exciting additions to our workforce tools in Vermont. And I know that was brought up earlier as a question, so I wanted to highlight this.
I've, I remember that Estix Tech Center used to build homes years ago, and I'm curious as to why that evaporated.
I don't know about Estix. I know that they still do, and some of the tech centers, it's just very complicated because you have to mobilize and demobilize at the end of every day with the students, and it's it, with such a small window of time that they have to work, it's really not, it's very cost prohibitive.
Okay, thank you.
Well, anything we can do in those areas would be really incredibly beneficial for us. I hope we can do more.
Right. You can't build homes if you don't have electricians and plumbers and people who can hang sheet rock and pour foundations.
Great, great. All right, so we are through our committee reports and move on to item seven, which is the Vtrans project prioritization, regionally driven potential bridge projects, and I assume that you'll be presenting on this, Bethany. Is that correct?
That is correct. So this is the second year that the Transportation Advisory Committee has gone through Vtrans's new project prioritization and selection process. And in years, previous years of, of project prioritization really focused in on ranking existing projects in the capital, the Vtrans capital program. And with this new process, it really shifts into how to identify new potential projects and select projects to go into the capital, to the capital plan. So it's that on ramp. Last year, the TAC last year, the TAC, my still note, last year, the TAC focused on paving roadway and traffic and safety projects. And this year, they focused on town highway and state highway bridges, and though all the, the intent is that they'll flip flop every other year with those projects. So this year, the TAC looked at and ended up evaluating eighteen bridges overall, and those are included in your packet towards the end, and there's a preliminary ranking of those bridges. And so there were eleven bridges that were identified by Vtrans, and those are called asset-driven bridges. And then there were seven bridges that were identified either by the TAC or nominated by our member municipalities, and those are called regionally driven potential projects, and those are the bridges that are in like a nice little light lilac color in, in your packet. So unlike past, you know, the, with the old system, the TAC would take projects and they would just rank them number one through number ten in order. The, the whole process has changed, and all projects or potential projects are scored in eight different categories. And in your packet, for those who really want to get in the weeds, I kind of, I included a summary of all of those eight categories and, and in general, how, what data is used to score them. But what the TAC focuses on and what the TAC is able to the TAC and the region is able to influence are the points from three categories, and those are economic access, regional factors, and health access. So the TAC at its last several meetings has approved the scores for the economic access, regional access, and health access for all of these bridges. And what I would be, Bill, what I would be looking for from the board tonight is a ratification of those scores in those three categories that, that the TAC contributes to. But before we get to that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have, either about the prioritization method or any specific questions you have about the bridges.
Big, good presentation on that. Great package of information for us all. As you were describing the every other year process, bridges and roads. I remember the bridges. And is it a good assumption that if they were on the bridges list two years ago, they're not on the bridges list now that those projects were completed? Or is that not a good assumption?
So how we're approaching this is if from this list that goes to Vtrans, they're going to select project, they're going to select potential projects and make them projects and put them in the capital program. And so from there, the TAC won't necessarily see them again. We'll, we'll follow their progress as they make their way to construction. But it's really this potential project list that the TAC is going to get involved with. So if, if a bridge is if a bridge isn't selected to become an official project this year from this list, we start the process again in two years and review it and nominate it again.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about the prioritization? And in particular, the three areas of scoring that were allowed for the Regional Planning Commission, and the TAC in particular. Okay, I don't see any questions. And I assume this took some time and some thought, and really appreciate that for those on the TAC that participated. So economic ass access, the regional access, and health access are the ratings that you would like us to validate here tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then once those, you know, the scores that the region contributes to are submitted, Vtrans is going to rerun their scores that they're responsible for. So in a future packet, we'll include this list again with noting any changes. Just, just for your information, but they will not be changing our, the, the scores from the economic access, regional access, or health access categories.
Okay. Any concerns? Questions, comments? Nearly every municipality we represent is on this list and I'm glad to see one that I'm familiar with in Bakersfield making the list and seeing scores there that are probably reasonable. It's hard for me to know exactly the condition of some of these that since we drive over them rather than through them, but I'm assuming that there's some good data that the TAC is using. Obviously, the route is important for health and regional and economic access, more than the physical condition of it. It's whether that bridge exists and can be depended upon is most important to those three categories.
I did include for, for folks that received the digital package, there is a link, the most recent bridge inspection and photos for each of the bridge. So if you are curious to learn a little bit more about that, that bridge that you're driving over, feel free to check those out. The photos are pretty interesting.
Yeah, thanks for that. I didn't realize that. Those are paper links that are in the document.
Yep.
Excellent work as usual, Bethany, and all of you that are a part of the Transportation Advisory Committee.
That's a heavy lifting.
Well, that's what full-time staff often do, but we're blessed to have some of the best in the state. All right. I would be glad to entertain a motion relative to the prioritization or the, the validation of these prioritization scores by the TAC of these three specific criteria.
So moved.
All right, so you'll move to endorse those. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Elizabeth. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of endorsing, validating the scores for the preliminary transportation values as provided by the Transportation Advisory Committee for us this evening, please say aye.
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 Hi.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. And are there any abstentions? All right, thank you all for your vote there. And again, thanks to TAC and Bethany and others, I'm sure, that helped you with this. We'll move then to this item number eight, the equity and inclusion input for the regional plan. We discussed this as another key topic at the Executive Committee in May. And it really arose out of a concern that some had about where some of the learning that we have been provided access to through the contract we have with a consultant with specialty in inclusion, equity, justice, and diversity. And the thought was that it's time for us to start to put together some tangible work and to start to see some actual products from this work with the consultant. Specifically now, as we move into the actual revision of our regional plan. So we arrived at a scheme where we thought we could do this by asking each of the Northwest Regional Planning Commission committees to review the recently approved justice, equity, diversion, and inclusion statement that is meant to express our perspectives here at Northwest Regional Planning Commission. And how we can actually incorporate those characteristics into our work in, for example, the regional plan in reviewing projects for project development as is done in project review in projects that are brought before us, for example, from the Transportation Advisory Committee and from the energy and climate, the housing, and other work activities that our committees are driving. And so Catherine has put together a little packet to kick us off here. And then we'll agree at the end of this as to how we'll implement it, but I think that the goal would be that once everyone sees the question that, or, or the, the goal that we have set aside for each committee to, to arrive at a date where we would report back on those. So Catherine, I'll let you take it over.
All right, my computer has chosen now to freeze. Okay, there we go. So I just wanted to remind everybody first of the timeframe. So the regional plan, we do once every eight years. It's an action plan, and it addresses issues of regional importance. Our plan is to have a full draft to the fully reviewed by the committee by December, that by the end of this calendar year with the review by the board, the beginning of twenty-three and adoption and early summer of twenty-three. And the regional plan has all of these sections. So on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see all the requirements that are included in statute from land use, energy, transportation, cultural resources, housing, economic development, flood resilience. And then we organize it all a little bit differently in our regional plan into, into really three main sections, the economic region, the social region, and the physical region. And we anticipate keeping that same general format with this next regional plan update. And as part of that regional plan update, some things that the committee is keeping in mind is that we want to retain the short, focused, action-oriented approach to the regional plan. Action-oriented approach to the regional plan. We want to have less data, but key data and have a lot of graphics. We are going to do all the census updates because we have all new data, will include indicators, clear policies. And we'll have a public engagement plan that the committee actually reviewed last at their last meeting. That really utilizes our existing networks and will focus on other outreach to reach. Those people who might not normally participate in order to address our engagement and inclusion goals. And then there are three new topics that aren't really addressed in our current plan. That we hope to weave throughout the entire plan. The first is the impacts COVID has had on our communities, both positive and negative, and how that's impacted all of the areas addressed in the regional plan. Second is climate resilience and adaptation and how that impacts decisions, whether it's land use. Or transportation or emergency preparedness, and then the third one is equity and inclusion. And that is where. Let's skip that slide, that is where the executive committee was focused on, on how can we engage our committees in this process? So we would, we talked about an approach where in the months of June and July. When our committees or standing committees or our topic committees meet that we they have as an agenda item. To ask two questions, first, to look at the statement of inclusion just adopted by the board. And talk about how that impacts the work of the committee. What do you need to do differently? Is there anything you need to do differently? What questions do you have? What information do you need? And then to think about in the regional plan perspective. What are the justice, equity, diversion, and diversity and inclusion goals or objectives? Related to your committee's topic that should be considered for the regional plan. And the idea is that if our all of our committees can do this in June and July, then we can compile the feedback and the input and have a broader discussion at our July board meeting. So that is it in a nutshell.
Sounds like a plan.
Do, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I I really like this approach and just to put it concrete, for example. I would be responsible for working with the Executive Committee to. Review our statement of inclusion, how it impacts our work, express that in a brief statement. And then how we would actually incorporate some justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Goals or objectives in the work of the Executive Committee ongoing. And in particular, how that might be folded into some of the things that are highlighted in the regional plan as presented in the previous slide.
And I should say that we wouldn't expect commissioners to do this all on your own, that the staff will be there in attendance. And help with these conversations and with information and with follow-up items. I'm hoping to be able to go to most of the committees myself, because it's always a goal of mine to try to go to the committee meetings and it doesn't happen as often as I would like, so. We, if it's not me, it will be somebody else on staff who's comfortable participating in this conversation with the committee chair.
And I will also be working hard to attend most of the committee meetings in this period of June and July as well. It'll be very important for us to work together and given that. This is a important element of the work for this current year where I'm chair, I'm glad to to give a little bit of extra here, so.
I think in if if commissioners feel like these are good questions. If you're in a committee meeting, these would be good questions to be asked to have a conversation with your committee. The other thing I would ask you to think about is if there's particular. Information for your committee, if you're a committee chair or committee member that you think would be helpful to get in advance. That you can think of, we we can work to do that. If you can't think of anything, that's fine too, but if you can think of something, whether you have a question about some data or other information. We're happy to try to pull that together in advance of the conversation.
And this this is being thrust upon the committee chairs and the committees with. Exactly four minutes notice here, and so we want to make sure that. You do reach out to Catherine or me about what we can do to help in this process. And certainly, if if you have any reservations, express those clearly so that we can try to deal with them. They're very likely reservations that would be similar in other committees. And what we'll do is we'll send out that one slide there of the quest, the two questions. To each of the committee chairs for them to use in their June and July meetings with the goal of bringing those back. At the September meeting.
Joy.
Any questions or comments now? Yeah, Al.
Well, first question is, we're all white. Where do we get the insight into some of the issues that people, black and indigenous and people, other people of color face every day? So my first question is. We're behind the eight ball just because we have white privilege and we've had it for over two hundred years. I'm not so sure with have the capacity to truly understand what it's like to be black or indigenous, other people of color. The second is more of a positive comment. And that is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is already embarked on a long-term process. Creating an equity committee that's made up of many municipalities, looking at creating a plan to help. Individual towns address these issues and things they need to think about, and they do have some boilerplate. Formats to that they're working on to advise communities of how to approach this project.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear your your second comment, Al, and I would just say in response to your first that. We're not going to be able to change the makeup of our commission or our individual histories as as people here in Vermont. But we do have the opportunity in our regional plan to think about. Where we may have those privileges and we want to make sure that that is. Those privileges are opportunities that anyone in our region can reach out for, grab, and live by. Because we're making concrete steps in our regional planning activities for those purposes.
Right, that's called equity.
Yeah, and and hopefully too, that not only what we've heard from Dr. Rickley, can you help me with the pronunciation of that? I'm sorry.
Ra Kelly.
Ra Kelly, I I should just call her Dr. Jude, but. Regardless, we've had several meetings that have focused on trying to ask some questions of us and some. Provoke some thoughts in us and. I think we've had conversations internally even before that, and we're we're going to have some more. But again, this is a time where we've focused our efforts. For the purpose of after a year being able to see some actual objectives. And even some thoughts of perspectives that can be shared. With our municipalities in the regional plan, so that that would be where we go. Okay. You can always find out who's doing that because the yellow box lights up, but. It wasn't my yellow box. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll be in touch with committee chairs and the staff that work with your committees to to make sure that we can roll this out in a way that's doable and helpful for for everybody.
Yeah, we thought too that we might make sure you have access to the recordings that we made of Dr. Kelly. All right, do we need any sort of action on that? I don't think so. All right, we'll then go to commissioner announcements. I see no hands. And. Before we go to the last agenda item, I'd just like to thank you all, this was a little bit longer meeting. And yet I think it was a very informative and a very important one relative to. Development projects in our region and relative to road. Particular bridge projects in our region and then this discussion about how we can. Inform our plan with what we've been trying to learn about. Justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion here in the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. And with that, I'll see if there is a last motion for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go, Sylvia, thank you.
Second.
And we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, we are adjourned, take care, be safe, be healthy.
Good night.